The House will come to order. Prayer by the chaplain.
Invite you to join me in an attitude of prayer. Almighty God, we gather today keenly aware of the challenges we face in our communities and in our state. We are divided in so many ways. We are faced with so many challenges. We are surrounded by pain and hurt, expectations and disappointment, but also hope and so many possibilities. So we gather here today from many places called to serve the people of Minnesota. And today, God, I pray for your blessing on these servants of the Minnesota House. Give them wisdom to see clearly the injustices of systems around us and the skill to work across divisions for the sake of our neighbors. I pray for open hearts and minds that reach beyond the barriers of party, for boldness to speak truth to power and to be a voice for those who are shoved to the margins of our society. Help these servants to use their authority to serve faithfully with compassion and respect. Hold us all accountable to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The chaplain for today is the Reverend Tanner Howard from All Saints Lutheran Church, Cottage Grove, Minnesota. Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A copy of the proclamation from the governor is on each member's desk and also online. The clerk will take the roll.
Yeah, my scanner's not working here. They're trying to take roll.
Members, if we could have it quiet in the chamber, will the chief clerk now please call the names of the members who have not checked in yet? Members, you need not indicate your location.
Igbadje. Igbadje, present. Barr.
Barr, here.
Barr, present. Baker.
Baker, St. Paul, present.
Baker, present. Becker-Finn. Becker-Finn. Christiansen.
Christiansen, present.
Christiansen, present. Davids.
Davids, present.
Davids, present. Dafne.
Dafne, present.
Dafne, present. Fisher.
Fisher, present.
Fisher, present. Franzen.
Franzen, present.
Franzen, present. Frederick.
Frederick, present.
Frederick, present. Gomez.
Gomez, present.
Gomez, present. Haley. Haley, present. Hamilton.
Hamilton, present.
Hamilton, present. Hanson J.
Hanson J, present.
Hanson J, present. Hassan.
Hassan, present.
Hassan, present. Hausmann.
Hausmann, present.
Hausmann, present. Katisa Watun.
Katisa Watun, present.
Katisa Watun, present. Lee. Lee. Markwart.
Markwart, present.
Markwart, present. Mason.
Mason, present.
Mason, present. Mortenson.
Mortenson, present.
Mortenson, present. Murphy. Murphy. Nelson Ann.
Present.
Nelson Ann, present. Noor. Noor, present. Pinto.
Pinto, present.
Pinto, present. Pryor.
Pryor, present.
Pryor, present. Ryer. Ryer, present. Vang.
Present.
Vang, present. Becker-Finn. Becker-Finn. Lee. Lee. Murphy. Murphy.
The clerk will close the roll. A quorum is present, and pursuant to Minnesota statutes 2020, section 3.073, I declare the House organized for this special session. Speaker Winkler. Majority Leader Winkler offers the following motion. The clerk will read the motion.
Winkler moves that the chief clerk be and is hereby instructed to inform the Senate and the governor by message that the House of Representatives is now duly organized pursuant to law for this special session.
Representative Winkler.
Representative Hortman, members, I ask for your support. This is a ceremonial motion to let others know that we are here.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. Introduction of bills. The following House files have been offered for introduction today. The chief clerk will report the House files and give them their first reading.
Introduction of first reading of House files 1 through 32.
First reading, House files 1 through 32. Motions and resolutions. Copy of the non-controversial motions are at the House desk and online, if any. Are there any non-controversial?
No.
There are no non-controversial motions, so we will not take action on those. The clerk will report the motion.
Dowd is introducing House Concurrent Resolution Number 1, a House Concurrent Resolution relating to Minnesota's peacetime emergency. Dowd moves that the House Concurrent Resolution Number 1 be taken up and be placed upon its adoption.
Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and members. This is a motion to allow us to bring a motion to the House floor to end the emergency powers. It has been 458 days since the start of the emergency powers, and I'll tell you what, the state has been through a lot. The mask mandate ended one month ago, and thankfully, today is the first day that we're all allowed to be back here on the House floor. And I will just say, it feels good to see you all, and especially, it feels good to see your faces. In the last seven days, since the mask mandate has ended, we have seen cases and all of the statistics and data continue to plummet. The positivity rate today is at an all-time low, 1.2%. And we have the fewest people hospitalized with COVID at any time since we've been tracking that statistic. The death rate is as low as it's been since the very earliest days of the pandemic, and all of these numbers are headed in the right direction. And we have Minnesotans to thank for that. I got my vaccine on the very first day I was eligible. That was my choice. I felt comfortable with that. I made the decision to do it. Some people decided not to. That's certainly their right, but the reality is, we are over 60% vaccinated in this state, and we're approaching that critical 70% vaccination. We've been at full capacity in bars and restaurants, full capacity in stadiums and sporting events, and everybody save one person realizes that the pandemic is over. And today, I'm going to give you an opportunity to send the message to that last person who's holding on: our governor. We have voted on this 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20 times. There was a time when we had bipartisan votes on this. We've talked about that in the past. Started in June of last year, we had two Democrats that voted with all of the Republicans. In July, that grew to four. In August, also four. In September, five. In October, five. In November, five. And in December, six Democrats. If we took this vote today and six Democrats voted with Republicans, we would agree with the vast majority of Minnesotans who understand that this pandemic has ended and that these emergency powers are no longer needed. But on January 11th, when we took that next vote, when six votes would have made a difference, not a single Democrat has voted with Republicans in this chamber to end the emergency powers. Other states are voluntarily giving up their emergency powers. In fact, I believe it's Vermont who is voluntarily ending their emergency powers today. So, members, I would ask that we take this opportunity to celebrate the fact that we know that the pandemic is over, and the reason I know that we know that is because I can see your faces, and we're all here together. Because of the vaccines and the actions that we took, we are safe to be here in this room together. And that is all the evidence you need that this emergency powers needs to end. The fact that we are here today in session in the Minnesota House of Representatives, and we came to do our jobs. So let's not let the first vote that we take, as we're here together, all together, masks off, sleeves rolled up, ready to do our job, let's not let the first vote that we take be a vote that denies Minnesotans and denies science. Let's do what we all know is right and what all other Minnesotans know that we should and need to do. So please join with me in voting in favor of this in order to bring this motion up and we can end the emergency powers. And, Madam Speaker, I'd request a roll call vote.
Representative Dowd requests a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the Dowd motion? Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, Representative Dowd, it's good to speak in front of a live audience again. I'm sure you feel a little bit like Stephen Colbert or a nighttime host on television, having a nice live audience to respond to. Unfortunately, the message has been the same from the very beginning, which is, this is not a big deal anymore. It's time to stop. The emergency is over. We've had a year of that message, regardless of how many Minnesotans have been hospitalized, regardless of what the transmission rate has been, regardless of how many Minnesotans are dying, the message has been the same. We do have faces in this room. We have an audience, but the responsibility to continue to make sure that we are properly responding to the pandemic, even in its final phase, remains. There are six reasons that we should not take up this motion today on the merits. First of all, we take this motion up, we pass the resolution afterwards, send it to the Senate, and they pass a resolution, Minnesota will immediately lose $30 million a month in SNAP benefits. Gone. We will lose the ability for the Department of Health to have the flexibility to change, coordinate, and to adapt to changing circumstances for testing. We are not at 70% for vaccination. We are at 60%, so we have not reached our target. We don't know what actions will be required by the Department of Health in order to be able to meet the vaccination goals that we have. More flexibility is still required. We have moved state employees around to be able to respond to a crisis. The governor, through executive action, has been able to shift state employees and to be able to put our state employee resources to bear where they are most needed. The ability to continue to do that as events may change goes away. We would immediately stop the ability to create an orderly wind down of the emergency powers. They would go away immediately. So rather than have an eviction moratorium off-ramp that is currently being negotiated, rather than determining what the best way to move employees around within the state or to address testing, vaccines, or what kind of infrastructure or capacity is still required at the Department of Health in order to continue, that ability would immediately disappear. Finally, there is a question of ending this emergency authority by resolution right now, and what would happen if we ended up with a surge or a variant or a change in the disease whose course has not been entirely predictable? If we end the emergency powers, the capacity of the governor to reinstate them to respond to another crisis on COVID-19 is very much up in the air. So taking a vote today to bring this resolution immediately to the floor with a vote has consequences. They are negative. The emergency is certainly far better than it has been in the past, but the need to have an orderly wind down to our COVID-19 pandemic remains, and I ask members to vote no on this motion to take this resolution up. We are not in a place yet where we can do it without consequence, and this resolution has zero planning, zero effort made to understand the consequences of our decision today. And, members, I ask for a no vote for that reason.
The member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, and members. It's good to be here again with no masks on. It's great to see our staff here. It is truly a joy to serve in this chamber, and I love seeing the chairs filled. To echo a little bit about what Representative Dowd said, yesterday, I had a graduation party for my daughter Hannah in our backyard, where I slaved over a smoker for, I think, three days. I smoked a couple hundred pounds of meat, and we served lots of people. Not one of them came to the backyard with a mask. Similarly, as my wife and I prepared for that day, we shopped in a lot of different places. We went out to restaurants to eat a meal as we were shopping from one place to the next, no masks. As we drove home through downtown Wilconia, we drove past the theater, and we saw people streaming into a movie theater to go see a movie, wearing, that's right, no masks. I heard that the I-90 party was a good time. I was, again, slaving in a hot backyard, but a lot of you were at the I-90 party. I heard it was great. No masks, I don't think. So what we've seen is no mask, no mask, no mask. Transmission rates are down, and I'm beginning to think that we are being, we are in a relationship with a governor who is sort of an abuser. I feel many ways we're being gaslighted by our own governor in this relationship that we have with him, that we're continually being told, well, I gotta do a few more things. This is important. I have to hold on to this, but I won't do it much longer. We're seeing sort of the light at the end of the tunnel, but it's not really the case. We're being gaslighted. Members, I just think that this is an opportunity for you to say to the people who are both out there and in your district and that you represent and that are asking you, because I get lots of calls myself, and that was a popular topic of conversation yesterday. Beyond what is your daughter going to do in the fall, the first question was, what is going on with the emergency powers of the governor? And I know for a fact that many of the people who were attending the party last night or yesterday that asked that same question, they're not necessarily in my party per se. They are members of the DFL party, and they were saying, I think it's time to be done. It's time to be over. So if they're saying that, and of course, we're saying that, it is time for you to say that as well. It is time for you to stand up. It is time for you to utilize your election certificate. It is time for you to say to the people who are, some of them outside this chamber, some of them watching on TV, I agree that while the governor does enjoy the chief executive position, this resolution does not strip him of that. He will still be the governor. He will still have the ability to weigh in on things. But as I've said a number of times, your election certificate is being made irrelevant. You've got an opportunity to say to Minnesota, we are going to help you end this gaslighting relationship. We are going to stand up, and we are going to say, we're not going to be the next lemming to go over the cliff and vote to continue these emergency powers for yet another 30 days. Because in those abusive relationships that you've seen, and we've all watched them, the gaslighter doesn't necessarily live up to their promises after that defined period of time. Members, cast the right vote today. Uphold House Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Show Minnesota that you recognize that the science behind this is tremendous, and congratulations to the Minnesotans who have done their very best to make sure that our transmission rates are low and the vaccinations are high. I believe it's at 66%. But you don't have to be the next lemming at the voter box. You can cast a vote today to end the governor's emergency powers. Do the right thing. Do what Minnesotans require of you as their elected official, and vote to support House Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Bonner.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I believe, Madam Speaker, that it is the custom and usage of the House not to impugn the personalities of folks in the legislative or executive branch. From the very beginning of this pandemic, we have seen the governor go over and above to save the lives of Minnesotans, to do everything within his power to make sure that we saved lives. To compare him to as an abuser is flagrantly inappropriate and out of line. I would ask that members consider that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker. Point of order.
Representative.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Nash, please state your point of order.
My point of order is that personalities of the legislature are germane to the conversation, and I knew this was coming, so I bookmarked it. There is no mention in Mason's about personalities of the executive branch. It does cover personalities here in the legislature, but, and I knew that when Representative Winkler popped out of his chair and scurried over to talk to you, that that was what was coming. There is no mention of the executive branch in Mason's at all, members. So please, ignore the advice you've just been given because it is absolutely false. Thank you.
Members, we have longstanding custom and usage on the House on this topic, and the debate should be confined to the subject matter. We frequently refer to Mason's in the 2000 edition. It is section 114. I'm not sure if it remains in that same section, but what has often been quoted on this House floor is that a question should not be permitted that reflects upon the character or conduct of any member or upon the executive or other official. So, members, please confine your remarks to the subject matter of debate and not the personalities of individuals. The member from Wright, Representative McDonald.
Madam Speaker, just for the record, members, and Representative Winkler, you, for the last 14 months, have said that we have said this is not a big deal, and that simply is not true. Over and over again, you have impugned our comments and our notions. We've never said, Representative Dowd, nor not one member of this Republican Party has ever said that the pandemic was no big deal, and yet, time and time again, you say this. That is a lie. It is untrue, and it's unbecoming of a gentleman such as yourself, especially in the majority leader. What is a big deal is the fact that you continue to tell half-truths and lies. We've never said it. Representative Dowd, every time he spoke, be it Zoom or on this floor, or myself or any of my fellow members, we've never, ever said that that pandemic was no big deal. We knew it is a big deal. So please, if you continue going forward to this special session, please tell the truth and don't lie that we don't think or ever said it's no big deal. In closing, what is a big deal, and millions of Minnesotans will attest to this, is that the governor simply needs to get rid of his emergency powers. That's the big deal that I hear in my county, for my businesses, for my families, for my children, from our teachers. The big deal is that he is no longer the big deal. The governor should get rid of his big-deal emergency powers. It's no longer necessary. The big deal, members, is right here. We are the big deal. Not really. It's the people who elected us are the big deal. We are their voices, and you know, folks, on every county in this state, it's time to get rid of the big deal and end the governor's emergency powers.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to comment on the governor continuing the emergency orders. I think there is some confusion about what that implies. I think Representative Majority Leader Winkler explained to us that there are some important elements that we need to continue, and that is the reason he's extending the emergency powers. We need to be able to continue the state-run vaccination sites and the moratorium on housing evictions, and we also need to maintain the state's hunger relief programs. Thankfully, we have made tremendous progress in vaccinations, but we have a significant minority of Minnesotans who remain unvaccinated. So people who are not vaccinated, it is recommended that they continue to mask, and we have children who are not eligible yet for vaccinations, some of whom are vulnerable to the COVID-19 infection. So the emergency is not over. We've made tremendous progress. We have a lot to celebrate, and we have a lot to look forward to, but we need to continue along this path. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Maeker, Representative Erdahl.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and I understand that one of the reasons for continuing the emergency order is the $30 million monthly payments on the SNAP program, and I was wondering, would Representative Winkler yield for a question, please?
He will yield. Representative Erdahl.
Thank you. Representative Winkler, do we have any indication on when those payments will stop from the federal government? Are we looking at a year from now? We still can't end the emergency powers because we're getting $30 million from the government.
Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Erdahl, the best information I have is that as long as some form of state emergency continues into the month of August, we will be eligible for continued SNAP payments from the federal government to the state of Minnesota through September. So as long as we have some kind of an emergency, and I want to point out that it does And I want to point out that it doesn't mean that it has to be the executive emergency that was originally called, potentially. There is a possibility that this could be resolved through legislative action. But what we're voting on today is a motion to take up a resolution that would end it immediately without knowing at all whether we would have any ability to continue to receive those benefits, whether knowing we could continue vaccinations, testing, et cetera. So the point being, there are worthwhile conversations to be had about how to continue the emergency for purposes of continuing to receive the SNAP benefits, but on a vote today, right now, we don't actually know what we're doing.
Representative Erdahl.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Leader Winkler. I appreciate the clarification.
The member from Wright, Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, Madam Speaker, breaking news. Breaking news. The Democrats are likely to hold on to emergency powers until August. For what reason? For the love of money. Madam Speaker, we know the biblical truth, that the love of money is the root of all evil. And their justification, Madam Speaker, the Democrat majority's justification to cling to emergency powers that are no longer needed is so they can have more money from the federal government to Minnesota. Madam Speaker and members, that is not a justification to cling to the continued abuse of emergency powers. Absolutely not. Madam Speaker and members, yesterday was the Albertville Parade, and I think probably every single member in this chamber, Madam Speaker, would agree that among the top five cities in the entirety of Minnesota is Albertville, St. Michael, Atsigo, Hannover, and Dayton. And Albertville had their parade yesterday. It was actually Albertville Friendly City Days for the weekend, but yesterday was the parade. Thousands of people lining the street. And I walked to the parade with Congressman Ammer and many others, and it was a hot day yesterday, sweaty. And I know you're thinking the mental picture right now, Representative Lucero running back and forth across the street, drenched in sweat. But as I was doing that, I was shaking the hands of my constituents, and I do not recall seeing a single mask all day. Not a single mask. Thousands of people clustered together, enjoying life, enjoying what Minnesota has to offer here in summertime, summertime, excuse me. And I did not hear a single person, many, many people spoke to me, not a single time that any person ever say, Eric, when you go into special session tomorrow, make sure that the governor continues his emergency powers. It was just the opposite, Madam Speaker, members. Every single person that brought up this topic, and I did not elicit anything, it was me introducing myself or people coming up to me, and the words out of their mouth that they started was, Eric, the governor needs to end his emergency powers. You need to end his emergency powers. There is no longer an emergency. There's no justification for it. And the fact that we just heard that the justification is so that Minnesota can get more money from the federal government, there is no better reason to bring it to an end. Additionally, Madam Speaker, we heard another representative, Representative Bonner, say that the governor saved lives. No, the governor destroyed lives. He destroyed businesses. Right here, headline today, I heard it on the way in, Suicide Attempts Among Adolescent Girls Surged By More Than 50% During the Pandemic, CDC Says. I know others have heard that headline, just came out, I heard it today. Governor's decision-making is flawed. And I've said it over and over and over again, and I'll say it again now. To say that football field-sized candy stores can be open, but that actual outdoor football fields had to be closed to prevent high school graduates from participating in their rite of passage is flawed thinking. It is flawed thinking to deem liquor stores and Planned Parenthood as essential while slamming closed the doors of churches. That is flawed thinking. It is abuse of power. The governor has power, and he's abusing it. That is not impugning his character deliberately. It is a statement of fact. The governor, the executive branch, has power, and he is severely abusing it. We need to bring it to an end. We've had 20 opportunities that the Democrat majority has stood as a roadblock in the way of returning the legislative branch to a co-equal constitutional branch. The vote we're about to take is going to be the 21st vote, the 21st opportunity. Unlike the previous 20 Democrat roadblock failed attempts, let's make the 21st success. Let's return to what we should be and not continue the Democrat lust for money. Thank you, members.
The member from Sibley, Representative Grunhagen.
Oh, thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Yeah, I just, my questioning is right along the same line as Representative Erdahl's. They are about $30 million. I serve on the HHS Committee, and I did a little bit of checking, and I think Majority Leader Winkler referred to it, that there is a way to continue in a state of emergency and still be eligible for the additional $30 million regardless of what your position is, okay? And obviously, we've heard some strong opinions regarding that. And by the way, the federal government's broke. There are $28 million in the hole in the general fund, much less unfunded liabilities. So we're simply getting fiat money. Some people would call that monopoly money, but that's for another day. The point is, according to our staff, there is a way to bring a compromise here, and that would be to have a state of emergency continue so that we could receive the $30 million but not have the governor or end the governor's emergency powers. And Majority Leader Winkler seemed to allude to this in his comments, and I appreciate that clarification. Madam Speaker, if Majority Leader Winkler would yield?
Also sometimes known as Speaker Winkler? He will yield. Representative Grunhagen.
Thank you. Majority Leader Winkler, would you be open to exploring a compromise where we continued a state of emergency so the $30 million would still be available and yet end the governor's emergency powers? Is that something you'd be, you and your members would be willing to consider?
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, Representative Grunhagen, absolutely, we would be open to a version of emergency powers continuing, but not just simply for the SNAP benefits. I alluded to a number of other important reasons why the governor continues to need executive action for flexibility to respond and to make sure that if we end it, we are providing for a continuation or a renewal of emergency authority later if there's a change. So there's a lot to this. This has been under discussion with your leadership, with Senate Republican leadership, with the governor's team for well over a year, and there has been no resolution. We've had a committee study it extensively, and the fact is, we could get to something like that at the end of this special session as part of an overall negotiated package, and we are open to finding a way forward. But we are not going to unilaterally disarm the administration's ability to respond to COVID changes and to an orderly wind down of our needs today by immediately terminating the authority without further consideration.
Representative Grunhagen.
Oh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader Winkler, for that response. If he would continue to yield?
He will. Representative Grunhagen.
My understanding is that Representative Haley's bill did address some of those needs. Were you familiar with that? And are you open to considering that particular? Oh, you have that bill? Okay. Are you open to considering that bill?
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, Representative Grunhagen, I think this version of the bill is a little bit outdated at this point in time, but yes, we are open to the concepts that have been included in that bill. I believe Representative Sandsted has also introduced and moved a bill that had some of the same concepts in mind. The challenge, of course, is that every time we work on a bill, we end up getting further ahead on COVID-19, and some of the considerations that went into it actually are no longer relevant. So I think there is a way to do it. I think it could happen this special session, and Representative Haley's concepts are very much a part of it.
The member from Goodhue, Representative Haley.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, that was good timing. Thanks for the lead-in, Representative Grunhagen. You read my mind. First of all, it's great to see everybody here, and it's great to have the barricades down from the Capitol and to have the People's House be open so that we can do what we were elected to do, serve Minnesotans, create policy, craft solutions, make tough decisions. That's what we're here to do. So to Representative Grunhagen's entree, when you listed the reasons why we can't do this today, and I understand you're not going to pass this resolution, we aren't going to have the votes, the 19th time we're doing this or the 20th time, but we have offered solution after solution after solution. And my bill was warmly received, I believe, and addressed the things that you're objecting to, Representative Winkler. It addressed the SNAP money. It addressed the ability for the Department of Health to do testing. It addressed moving state employees around. It addressed this orderly wind down. And we asked the governor, when that wasn't accepted, for compromised language. We've been open to that all along. So we continue to bring a solution forth, and we're not getting feedback back from the majority party on how that language needs to be changed so that we can move forward. So there clearly is not the intent on your side of the aisle to move forward. When you talked about zero planning and zero effort, we've had a year and a half to plan for an orderly wind down, and yet the majority party has not put anything forth to do that. Minnesotans need to know that. We're here today to get this budget done, and part of that is ending these emergency powers. I can't believe that you continue to say this is about keeping people safe, this is about continuing vaccination clinics. No, it's not. It's about authoritarian power and control. And I have a hard time accepting that the majority party has so little faith in your election certificates and so little faith in the ability of this institution to respond, that you can't give us language to move forward. So I'd ask you, I ask you, Governor, what constitutes an end? What constitutes an end? Somebody answer that question. Somebody tell me the language that we presented a month ago, which addresses the points that Leader Winkler made. We can do this. We should have done it already. I reintroduced the language. It's here. It's filed. We can bring it up tonight. We can bring it up tomorrow. Capitol's open. Majority party, we are ready to work with you. We've given you proposals. Time is now. Let's get it done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The member from Dakota, Representative Mason.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There have been a lot of things said today and in other meetings as well that I have found particularly offensive and inappropriate for members of this body. Certainly, when the speaker said, everybody save one agrees with him, I take offenses at that. The fact that people are constantly trying to make themselves look as the authorities, again, I take offense. Our job is to protect people. To me, public safety is item number one, and I take that very seriously. But for some of the irresponsible and inappropriate comments that have been made today in other meetings, it makes it really hard for people to have confidence in this body. And I certainly wish people would act a little bit more professional and not just say disparaging things about the governor. We're going through an incredibly difficult time. It looks like we're close to the end, and it would be nice that we could do, at least come to the end, where people are treating each other civilly and not saying things that are not true and trying to just do things for drama. This is really very important. We have a job to do. I'd like us to get to work. Thank you.
The member from Olmsted, Representative Quam.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and it is an honor to be here representing my neighbors, my communities, the people from my district. Earlier, we heard, we don't know. And respectfully, I disagree, because some of us do know. Some of us have learned over the months and months that have gone on, and that we can achieve what needs to be done. The power of this chamber is that we're made up of individuals with our own skills, gifts, backgrounds, and capabilities, and together, we can create wonderful things to help our citizens. We can do and solve and serve, and that's why we're here. Our government wasn't a power of one. It was a power of the people, the people that picked every one of us to represent them, to be their voice, to think and work together and do what is needed for this state. The power of one is never as strong as the power of many, serving the state, serving the people. Let us come together. We can solve this because we've been watching it, we've been living it, and the people that we live with in our communities have been speaking to us. There is no single person capable of perfection, capable of doing everything right. We all have good in our hearts. We all have vigor and passion to help our citizens, our neighbors. But together, we can achieve. Please, work together, solve the things that some think we don't know, because we do, together, know how to solve this. Let us go forth and do so. Thank you.
The member from Shisago, Representative Newbrinley.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, and thank you, Representative Mason. I agree that we should not say things that are not true, and so I think we should deal with some facts here and make sure that we've got everything on the record and that we're all working with the same information. I think that would be helpful here. First of all, Representative McDonald, thank you for pointing out that what the Majority Leader has said over and over again is not true. We do believe that the pandemic was serious, tragic, absolutely tragic. I suspect most of us know people who were not just affected by the pandemic but who lost their lives. And it is offensive to say that we don't believe in COVID or that we don't believe it's serious. Of course, it was serious. That is absurd and patently false. In addition, you went through six things, so I want to address those things, six things, to make sure we're all on the same page, to make sure we all understand what has been happening to get us where we are today with this motion to end the emergency powers. So item number one, the $30 million a month in SNAP benefits from the federal government. Frankly, there are two issues at play here. One, that's $30 million a month for the next, well, until September, that's, depending on when it pays out, I don't know, that's $90, $120 million. We have literally We have literally received billions of dollars, billions of dollars from the federal government throughout this pandemic. I suspect that we could figure out how to manage the SNAP program without this money. And in fact, $1.2 billion of federal money has been left on the bottom line. As it turns out, we already have the money to fill in here if it's needed. We don't need this money from the federal government, but even if we did, good news, Representative Haley has a bill for that. Representative Haley introduced a bill during regular session to make sure that we could still receive that $30 million in SNAP benefits. It also included making sure that we could still test and vaccinate. And the majority leader is telling us that, "Well, that bill, that language is not exactly right now, it's outdated, we don't need it." Well, great! We've been waiting to hear what we need to do differently. We would love to know what the problem is so we can fix it, but as it turns out, all we ever hear is, "Well, that language isn't quite right, that's not going to work." Great, let us know why, because we are happy to roll up our sleeves and fix it. We have been trying to solve this problem for months, and the majority party will not engage. That is the truth of what has been happening here. One of, item three on the list, also, I would just like to make clear, it is not hard to get a COVID test at this point or a vaccine. Frankly, we don't even need the state sites anymore. Anyone can go to Walmart, do your, go buy some milk and get a vaccine. It is literally the easiest thing to do in the state of Minnesota right now. Item number three, vaccination rate. It is true that actually, it's not 60%, Majority Leader Winkler, it is 66%. 66% of Minnesotans 16 and older are vaccinated, 66%. Do you know what that number is, though, for our most vulnerable Minnesotans? For those 65 and older? 90% of the most vulnerable Minnesotans are vaccinated. 90%! These are coming, these are the state's numbers, these are not my numbers, I'm not pulling them out of thin air, these are the numbers that are coming to us from the Department of Health. 90% of the most vulnerable Minnesotans are vaccinated. But even if we're using the 66% number, guess what? That number's going up. Like, this is nonsense! This is nonsense. And item four, the governor has moved state employees around to deal with the pandemic, and that would end if we ended the emergency powers. Well, as it turns out, that's good news because the legislature appropriates funding for the different departments, the legislature determines what resources those departments should have, and guess what? The pandemic is over. So the governor should have to move those employees back to their normal jobs because, frankly, if they're not needed in their normal jobs, that's good for us to know because then we should be cutting some state budgets. Those employees should be moved back. That would actually be a good thing, a good out from, outcome of ending the emergency powers today. Now, the last two things kind of go together. This will stop our ability to create an orderly end to the emergency powers. Well, the majority party has made it clear that they are not interested in creating an orderly end to the emergency powers because we have been ready to do that since the beginning of this thing, and they have yet to engage on these items. So you can say that all day long, that it ends the ability to create an orderly end? Well, great! We're game for creating the orderly end! Let's do that! But as of yet, the majority party, the Democrats in the House of Representatives, have not done so. So what a joke to say that that's why we're not ending the emergency powers. Because guess what? That's in your power to do, and you haven't done it. And of course, the question of what happens with a surge or a variant, of course, these are serious things, although, interestingly, it was the beginning of the pandemic when it was really unknown, and there were kind of scary things happening, that we did great bipartisan work. The legislature is capable of doing its job. We are all here today to do our jobs. We are ready, but we're always two weeks away from a disaster, we're always two weeks away from catastrophe, there's always a wolf at the door. Well, guess what? That's not going to go away because whether it's a surge or a variant, what is it next time? What's the next thing? There is always a wolf at the door. I mean, if this is our reasoning, that something else could possibly come up in the future, well, then this literally will never end. There will never be a time where there is no risk, that time will not exist. So if this is our reasoning, this is never going to end. It's interesting, the majority set leader said, "We're open to finding a way to move forward." Well, we would love to hear that, we would love to engage on that. We have been trying desperately to engage on finding that way forward. We have presented bill after bill after bill, idea after idea, to make this happen, and the Democrats in the House have been unwilling. So they can say everything, you can say anything you want to say today, but frankly, I don't believe you. When you say that, your actions have proven otherwise. It's time for the rubber to hit the road because clearly, nothing is going to change from the Democrats in the House until this is ended. Members, I would really encourage you to vote yes.
The member from Candy Ojai, Representative Miller.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Majority Leader Winkler, I took notes on your six reasons for not ending powers today, and I think we've heard a lot of arguments that have done a good job, an excellent job of dismantling those arguments. And Representative Newbrinley, thank you for marching through those and really pointing out each and every one of those. I do want to address one of the points that kind of bring up a real concern that I've had all along. One of the things Representative Winkler, Majority Leader Winkler, you had said was, "We can not end the powers today because we are not ready as a state to end those powers, and if they were to end today, then all sorts of bad things that would happen." Majority Leader Winkler, and members, there was already discussed many bills, many ideas brought from both parties, ideas, maybe some good, maybe some not so good, but all sorts of work because this has been kind of the underlying work for all of us all along. We want to get to a logical conclusion of this, and granted, we may disagree on what a logical conclusion is, but I think that we all agree we are looking for a logical conclusion on this. One of the things that I haven't heard yet today, I think everyone remembers, but the majority and majority leader, you're in charge of the majority, so people here certainly know, hopefully, people back home know, you run the House of Representatives, and you formed a committee to address this very issue. And I just wonder, where is the work of that committee? Why did we not prepare for today? If we are not prepared for today, that's not the burden of someone, me, standing here, that's the burden of the majority. You formed a committee, you said, "We're going to vet this out, we're going to listen to everyone, we're going to listen to ideas from both sides," and I think you listened, but then you didn't act. And this really addresses my concern that I've had all along, that I have as really the criticism of the work that's been done here and the criticism that I've been very clear about from the governor's office. Not personal attacks, not, "I don't like the guy for this or that," but there's a real important word that gets used a lot and yet seems to be misused just as often as it's stated, and that's the word leaders, or leadership. Good leadership doesn't react to things. Good leadership prepares, it anticipates, it sets realistic timelines, it sets strategies, it rises above the den of today with forward vision and perspective. And one of the things that's most disappointing is, is when you look at the great leaders of history, some of the characteristic traits that you see that come out of that, you see, you see a leader create confidence in the people and unity and purpose. And members, what I've seen in Minnesota over this last year is division, derision, arguments, attacks, personal attacks, as we're hearing here. If you're going to be the majority leader, if you're going to be the majority party, if the governor is going to be the governor of the state of Minnesota, why did we not prepare for today? This is not complicated stuff. We talk about out of the beginning, out of the gate, we didn't know what's going on and stuff, we've had months to know what's going on. It's been going in a very specific trajectory. We know the playing field, and if it's about money, which I don't necessarily agree with, but some people do, if it's about money, if it's about preparing for contingencies and stuff like that, that's what leaders do. But instead, what we're saying is, is Minnesotans, everyone who wants this to all be in the rearview mirror, we're just not ready for that yet because we don't know what we're going to do next, we don't know what's going to happen next, we don't know how to handle the things that are coming. Members, that's not good leadership at all. We have an opportunity today to make a statement that we are going to have good leadership in the state of Minnesota. We are going to behave like leaders. And members, if this doesn't pass today, then I fully expect, we're in special session, I fully expect as soon as we leave here today, the leaders get something done for the people of Minnesota. Because I can tell you in my district and the other people that I talk to, they're sick and tired of our lack of leadership and just telling them, "No, no, no, we aren't ready yet, you can't do that, we don't like that, we don't do that." We need to offer hope, direction, and vision for the people of Minnesota. We can do that. So if not at this moment, today, when we take this vote, we certainly better get in the saddles right after this session and get some of this work done and get it done by the end of the week because we can do it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Douglas, Representative Franzen.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. So we've done a lot of chatting about the vaccines, about the COVID, saving lives. What about the lives that are being, ending in Minneapolis in the areas of high crime, murders, drive-by shootings, children being killed? What about those lives? That is something that we are not addressing as well. Those lives matter just as much as those who have succumbed to the COVID virus. Members, we need to start taking public safety very seriously, we need to take the matter of the no-go zone very seriously, we need to address gang activity in Minnesota. Now, back to the emergency powers, it is high time to end those emergency powers. Members, since this time, we have found out that hydrochloroquine treatments do work. A study shows that hydrochloroquine treatments increased coronavirus survival rate by almost three times. We have treatments to address COVID as well. The observational study published by MedRxIV found that antimalarial drug hydrochloroquine along with azithromycin could increase the coronavirus survival rate by as much as 200% if distributed at higher doses to ventilated patients with a severe version of the illness. Members, remember when our governor banned the use of hydrochloroquine? How many lives could have been saved had he listened to other advice? Here is another article. This is Nutrition in the Actual COVID-19 Pandemic: A Narrative Review. It is a study. It was received March 17, 2021, and it was published June 3, 2021. The abstract reads, "The pandemic of coronavirus disease 2019 has shocked world health authorities, generating a global health crisis. The present study discusses the main finding in nutrition sciences associated with COVID-19 in the literature. We conducted a consensus critical review using primary sources, scientific articles, and secondary bibliographic indexes, databases, and web pages." Goes on to say, "We found that the COVID-19 lockdown promoted unhealthy dietary changes and increases in body weight of the population, showing obesity and low physical activities as increased risk factors of COVID-19 affection and physiopathology." Well, gee, members, you think you shut down the gyms, and of course, people are going to get sedentary and increase their body weight. I know for myself, I've had to struggle through that as well, was working out three, four, or five times a week, and it's been actually very difficult to get back into that routine. In addition, hospitalized COVID-19 patients presented malnutrition and deficiencies in vitamin C, D, B12, selenium, iron, omega-3, and medium and long fatty acids, highlighting the potential health effect of vitamin C and D interventions. Further, investigations are needed to show the complete role and implications of nutrition, both in the prevention and in the treatment of patients with COVID-19. So some of the practical statements of this study has said that the COVID-19 lockdown promoted unhealthy dietary changes, inactivity, daily intake, snacks, alcohol. Yes, of course, the alcohol, the liquor stores were able to stay open, members. Guess what? Records, sales shot through the roof. Not only was it the Amazon Prime and the Walmart stock prices, but also sales of liquor. This increased body mass and fat and showing obesity, overweight people, poor diet habits. Obesity is a risk factor for COVID-19. I can corroborate that as I've looked at the death files of those that have passed or been labeled as a COVID-19 death, this is, these were not healthy people. A healthy, balanced diet is an integral part of personal risk management. That is true, members. One of my speeches months and months and months ago, I said, "Maybe we should be putting down the Big Mac and focusing on health preventative measures." Vitamin C and D improve health-related outcomes in COVID patients. Sufficient vitamin intake and an active lifestyle are strongly recommended as a preventative measure to the general population. There is a large prevalence of malnutrition among hospitalized patients with COVID-19. You can eat and still be malnourished, people, if you are not eating healthy foods, if you have a diet of processed food that is not getting the proper nutrients into your body. Nutritional support and rehabilitation exercise are needed to avoid muscle atrophy in COVID-19 hospitalized patients, and they should also be considered as an integral part of the therapeutic approach. Deficient states of vitamin C, D, B12, selenium, iron, W3, and medium and long fatty acids increase the probability of hospitalization and mortality from COVID-19. If you recall, during the regular session, I did have a bill that would mandate the insurance companies to cover the testing of vitamin D, as that is not something that is readily checked. The gut microbiome profiles altered due to COVID-19 being involved in the magnitude of COVID-19 severity via modulating host immune responses. Our health friends starts in the gut, a healthy gut, a healthy, healthy immune system. A healthy gut microbiome serves as a preventative and protective factor, appropriate nutrition and probiotics are good strategies for its enhancement. Active lifestyle and physical activity allow for a lower risk and mortality rate in COVID-19 patients due to its positive effect on metabolic health and inflammation. due to its positive effect on metabolic health and inflammation. Finally, the present review has certain limitations. The information regarding the study aim has been presented with low numbers of studies compared to traditional reviews. Based on the results presented, we will propose a future research lines in the area of study of effects of diets with powerful anti-inflammatory effects of patients with COVID-19 and the risk of COVID-19 infection. And the conclusions of the study, which I'm sure you're dying to get to, the present narrative review found how the COVID-19 lockdown promoted unhealthy dietary changes and increases in body weight of the population, showing the obesity and physical activity levels as risk factors for COVID-19. In addition, hospitalized COVID-19 patients presented malnutrition, deficiencies, vitamin C, D, B12, selenium, iron, W3, medium, long-chain fatty acids, highlighting the potential health effect of vitamin C and D interventions. Members, health is wealth. If we do not health, if we are not healthy, we can't expect to have these life-changing events happen, sickness, disease, the COVID-19. While modern medicine is amazing at having a vaccine developed super fast.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
State your name, Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Could you quiet the room? Representative Franzen is trying to make a point, and it's a little loud in here.
Members, welcome back to the chamber, but please take your conversations off of the House floor. The retiring room is not available for your conversations, but the alcoves or outside in the rotunda would be appropriate places to continue your conversation. Representative Franzen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So back to the life-saving vaccines. Well, that is really amazing that they were developed super fast to deal with the COVID-19. However, that is not going to save the underlying causes of what is leading to the comorbidities, members. As a society, we really need to start taking health into our own hands so that when things such as COVID come up, our bodies are better equipped to deal with those stressors. Members, we should be talking about preventative measures, and we should have been talking about preventative measures the entire time of the COVID-19, but we did not. We focused on staying at home. Don't visit your friends and family. Don't have anyone over at your home. Kids, you're going to school every other day. Some, you're not going to school at all. We're quarantining healthy people, but we're not actually, never actually addressed the root cause. You cannot fix something without actually addressing root causes. And so that, members, is my little talk today. And I would just implore you to do the right thing and the emergency powers. The people of Minnesota do not need to be, need to be sold out in order to get some federal money. We do not need the federal money. We should be sending the federal money back to where it belongs. And we need to get back on with our lives. We are individual people created to make decisions that best reflect our personal needs and our family needs. It is not the government's role to keep us in bubble wrap to protect us of the what ifs. Thank you, members. Thank you.
The member from Wabashaw, Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, members. It was 15 months ago when I brought the first resolution to end these extraordinary unconstitutional peacetime emergency powers, special powers that were usurped by the chief executive of this state. So this is about the 21st time that we have been entertaining the notion to set the people of Minnesota free. Members, I hear people in my district every day asking me, why in the world does that governor still have that authority? Why? They say, why? Where's the science? We heard at the beginning of the pandemic, follow the science. The Democrats would try to condition us to believe that their idea of science was a rationale to shackle the freedoms of the people of the state of Minnesota, which they did. It was follow the science, their version of the science, of course. But today, members, it's undeniable. Anybody's measure of the science will tell you there's no longer an emergency. Let me state this again, members. There is no emergency. But the chief executive still has his special powers, his superpowers, as unconstitutional as they are. What if you follow the science? What if you think about the science? Well, members, I ran the numbers based on the mortalities in Minnesota. An average year, an average day, 27 people die from cancer. An average year, an average day, 22 and a half people die from heart disease. An average year, an average day, 7.64 people die from accidents. Accidents! On an average day, on an average year, 6.77 people die from Alzheimer's disease. On average day, in an average year, 6.75 people die from chronic respiratory disease. And an average day of an average year, 6.16 people die from stroke. Members, today, we lost five people, or yesterday, five people from COVID-19. There are six categories where people die from substantially, at substantially higher rates. If indeed, this chief executive was to follow the science, and Democrats, if indeed you were to follow the science, and if you wanted to use these superpowers that many of us believe are unconstitutional and wrongly placed, you would choose one of the other categories where people die at a higher rate to legitimize your grab of power. It would be much more legitimate at this point to have a peacetime emergency to prevent accidents. We would save more people if you indeed believe government is going to save the people, which they haven't. If you believe that, we should have a peacetime emergency to stop people from dying from cancer or heart disease or Alzheimer's or stroke or chronic respiratory disease. Your big government ideas, if they would come true, which they haven't, but if they would come through on some day down the road, as a discussion was saying earlier, if they would come true, your government savior could actually save more people. But the government is not the savior. Members, God is the savior, not this big government that we believe we need to interject in the middle of people's lives to shackle their freedoms and hold them in bondage throughout our state. That's what we have going on right now. We have landlords who are attempting to run their business, who haven't been able to collect rent to pay off their loans on their buildings. Landlords that are 12 and 15 months that they haven't received a check from their tenants. How are they going to pay their bills? What are we doing to them? Members, the state fair is coming up in August. 2 million people attend the state fair every day for 12 days, 12 days. 167,000 people a day go to the state fair. Guess what? They're going to meet. There's going to be no masks, no social distancing. The world will not end because there is no emergency. The people at the state fair know it. The Minnesotans that are going to attend the state fair know it. But do you know it, members? Democrats, do you know it? Does the chief executive know it? But no. Again, the ignorance to the reality here is deafening. The people of Minnesota are saying, why? Why do we have somebody who is practicing a dictatorship instead of leadership? An emperor. Well, members, the emperor has no clothes. The science tells us differently, members. It is time for us to call the emperor out because the emperor is the only person in Minnesota that doesn't know this. But he doesn't want to follow the science. But he's good at following political science. Political science. We're in the middle of a budget negotiation, members. The governor, the chief executive of this state wouldn't want to relinquish special powers that represented leverage in that budget debate. He is shackling the freedoms of the people of Minnesota in order to leverage his position in the budget negotiations. And that's the reason these unconstitutional superpowers are still before us today. Members, we got to make sure, not only do we need to end these unconstitutional superpowers right now, but we need to make sure they never happen again. Representative Barr introduced a bill today. He's calling it the Never Again Bill. And it's making improvements on a different version of something people were calling the Never Again Bill. It wasn't quite as well-written as we'd like. Representative Barr fixed it up. And we need to take a look and bring forward his legislation to make sure what this emperor did in abusing the people of Minnesota with his political science to bring forward his political ends never, ever happens again. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Candy Ojai, Representative Baker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I didn't really come down to speak a whole lot of any sense of assembly today because I'm just so tired. I'm literally tired from working every day. And when you're in business right now and you can't have employees that are coming in the door, when you put out interviews and interviews that are signed up for and people don't show up, and you hire somebody because they did show up and they were breathing, they show up for a day or two and then they don't come back. It's not just me, folks. I'm not a lousy employer. It's everywhere. And if you are talking to members and residents in your own district, you know that. So to my friends on the other side of the aisle, today, I am coming to a broken man. I am sick and tired of this mess that I see our executive officer wants to continue it one more month. And then it sounds like a couple more months because the money is too good to turn it off. I have begged leadership on the majority. I've thrown ideas at the governor's office to just get a lot of hats, pats on the head, and that's a great idea. And yeah, we'll get back to you. I'm sick of this. I came down here seven years ago, members, to kind of be one of those members you wanted to work with. A bipartisan kind of guy, a guy that would reach over and work with Representative Winkler on the driver's license bill. I put my neck on the line. And I'm broken because I'm tired. And this blind, following this governor over the cliff like so many of my friends over there are doing, it makes me sick. You have no idea what it's like out there as an employer, a good employer, a fair employer, and a very respectful employer to be saying this to my friends on the floor. But this is a joke right now. There is no emergency. And when the governor wants it one more time, and then he won't even use it to help folks like me get people to work by ending this unemployment insurance thing, or at least take an idea that I offered him before session ended, to let's give those folks a bonus. Let's pay them a bonus from that federal money. So if they get a job by July 1st, they get a nice $2,000 bonus in 90 days. Imagine that. How ridiculous is that? This is, this is a point in my life where I am disgusted because we, as a body that works bipartisanly a lot, is just so divided right now because of our head coach sitting on that side of the building. He has given us so little attention and so little respect that now I feel like I got to come out and start fighting. Representative Adelson, Representative Robbins, take me out to Civility Caucus. I'm done. I don't know what that even is for anymore. And that's how angry I am now. This is how personal this is. I'm done. I don't want to waste more years of my life if I don't think my members are listening to their residents because I know you are, but you're only listening to certain ones. And that's what makes it so hard today. I'm honored to be a part of this. But when you get kicked and kicked and beaten and put in a corner time and time again, there's a point of a break. And my point is, I'm there. So members, if you're going to just blindly continue to vote like you have since January 1st here in this body to support the governor from running his rules how he wants to run them, he wants the powers, but yet he ignores business. He ignores the people out there trying to provide really good jobs for people that literally are getting paid too much to come to work. I don't blame them for that. It's too good, and it's erroneously good. It's a problem. We know that here. We know that on the ground. And if you talk to your people back at home, they know they want you to end it because let's get back to working and living in Minnesota like we know how to do this. On my way down today, I was up enjoying some graduations yesterday, my one day off I've had in a long time. My only graduation parties that I've gotten to go to up in International Falls to my beautiful, beautiful niece, Anna. And on my way back, I was making some calls and talking to people and my air conditioner guy, who's always helped me, was going to meet me tomorrow morning, today, to work on some units at Super8, just one of my little hotels that I run. He said, Dave, I got to tell you, I don't have enough help. I have to have you go find another operator, another air conditioner person because I'm literally that backed up. He said, I got two guys out on unemployment. I just, I can't get them to work. I just, I want to, but I can't, and there's nothing you can do. So it just, again, it was kind of piling on top of what I'm already doing. One more thing I got to do is go find now a new HVAC person. So just, it's, if you talk to our folks like Representative Frankie, who's working on the line every single day, we want to be able to find people. They're not out there. The governor is doing nothing for business. Nothing to help business. And if you want businesses to step up and help our employees, if you want us businesses to help your constituents, you got to give us something. Because right now, the governor that you want to protect is doing nothing for them. It is time, members. It's so time that we start working and talking and actually trying to say it's enough already. And from a member that has done everything I can to show you I am genuine in my working with you, I feel like I'm at this end, and the members that are going to vote once again, along with the majority, are just going to thumb your nose at me one more time. I'm done. I can't do it anymore. Every time there's been an idea about trying to reopen Minnesota, let's give them a roadmap. Representative Haley and I have worked on a lot of those ideas, soft throws, easy ones to pick up. And every single time, the agencies have just laughed at us behind the And every single time, the agencies have just laughed at us behind the backs. We've had meetings, had cordial meetings. It's been laughable. They must have a great time after hours because I think we just look like fools because we're actually trying to get something done. So I have no desire to ever go to the residence again and have a little reception. I just, I'm so tired. And I don't want to sound like a beaten puppy dog, but that's kind of where I'm at. And I don't want to be that way. I don't want to be that way. We have a lot of victories that we have done here with my good friends in the majority. But this is one of those moments, members, where I really hope that you understand, this is personal. Business is personal to a lot of people. I want to be a better employer, but will you please, if you give the governor another 30 days, would you mind giving him a call on my behalf to say, hey, governor, why don't we do this bonus program that maybe somebody recommended? Why don't we do something? Because employers are literally gonna start dropping out. Because we physically can't do it anymore. Would you do me a favor and just do that? He won't return my calls. I know he returns your calls. So I'd appreciate that, members, because we're tired. I can't support not doing this any longer if we're at an equal branch of this government. I think 400-plus days is enough. Can you help us, please? But I can't keep playing this game and pretending that we all get along and the civility caucus is just the coolest thing. And I've been working hard to try to make this better. I can't do it anymore. So please, help us. Talk to the governor. Talk to him. Thank you.
The member from Manoka, Representative Scott.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And it really is good to be back, sitting in my chair and to see all of you. It's also good that the bathrooms off the retiring room are open again. I'm really glad I don't have to go out in the hallway and take a long detour just to use the bathroom. But I was just in the bathroom. And I was behind a stall and there were two other members, and I don't even know who they were. I didn't recognize the voices. But one of them said to the other, gee, I think they're just doing this because of the people that are out in the hallways of the Capitol today. Seriously? You think we're doing this because of some people out in the hallway? We've been doing this for the last 15 months. What is happening is not right. You know, if I can shift for a minute. When I was a kid on the playground and the bully was doing his thing, the bullying thing, and you refused to stand up to him alone, he called you a chicken. But when you took a group of your friends that thought the same way that you did, and you confronted the bully, he backed down and you were no longer a chicken. There's strength in numbers. You don't have to do this alone. You can make, you can take a vote today, a hard vote, but you won't be alone. And you're gonna be standing up to someone with tyrannical powers right now. So members, this is not for the people in the hallway. This is for the people of Minnesota, 65% of which think it's time for the governor to end his emergency powers. Vote Green. Support the doubt motion. Thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Herr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Boy, I've sat here, because I had the privilege of being on the House floor for this session and remotely listening to my Republican colleagues for over a year now. And I wanted to just address one point, because I know that a lot has been said today, but I wanted to address the point of the constant accusing of Democrats of lying about the position of Republicans on this COVID. And I just want to, and I don't know why that bothers me immensely, because I'm an extremely truthful person. And so when someone accuses us of lying, it really does bother me. So I went back and listened. I was gone for a bit because I went back and listened to tapes, to the videos of our discussions. And what I found was that many of my Republican colleagues did downplay the COVID. They did say it was not serious. One of my colleagues said 80% of deaths was only in long-term care and that the general population was not at risk. One of our colleagues, a Republican colleague, said that COVID was not serious and that people just took their vitamins and exercise that they could prevent themselves from getting COVID. That one of our Republican colleagues said that COVID is just like the flu. It's just a little bit different. And they also said that they hadn't met anybody who had had COVID. And hence, the severity of COVID wasn't that great. But another Republican colleague who said that children were immune from getting COVID, in which Representative Long stood up that day and spoke up and said, they are not immune from it. And he talked about the experience of his son. I want to be very clear that the Republicans, that the Democrats have not been lying. We've been very clear about the severity of COVID. We've been very serious about why the executive orders are needed. This was just a small example of the number of insensitive comments that were made about COVID and those who were dying from COVID. And that there were many times where posse members stood up and said, it is serious. You may not know people are dying, but people in our communities are dying. People in our communities are disproportionately impacted by COVID. We did not make those things up. That is true. So if we want to be honest today, then let's have an honest conversation. And it is okay to admit that you might have been wrong in the beginning. And as data came out, you changed your position. I make changes all the time. But to accuse the other party of lying when the data tells us that that is not true, I just wanted to make sure that that did not go unaddressed today because I think that the governor's executive orders are still needed. We're seeing surges at times where we were not anticipating. I personally know a number of people who are fully vaccinated who now still have COVID right now. All of my nieces and nephews who went back to in-person learning, all came back with COVID. All of them. I do not have one niece or nephew that went back into full-time who did not get COVID. And when you are part of family members who cannot get a vaccine because of their diseases, who cannot protect themselves because they are old and vulnerable, that we absolutely need to make sure that our population is safe and that COVID is under control before we move the executive order. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Washington, Representative Jurgens.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Last week, I attended a ribbon cutting at the Cottage Grove Ravine Regional Park in South Washington County. And on Thursday, with hundreds of other people, I sat in the Hastings Rotary Pavilion along the Mississippi River, listening to music. And over the weekend, I attended a benefit for family members. Many of you know my friend Tatum. It was for a family member of his. Hundreds of people at the Coliseum in Hastings, participating in the silent auction, raffles, catered food, all coming together for a good cause. Not once did I even think about COVID. I mentioned that to my wife when we got home that night. Here we were, among hundreds of people. Not once did it even cross our mind. Members, the emergency is over. COVID's not gone, and it might never be eradicated. But the emergency is over. We're in the management phase, and we have been for months. I have to disagree with my colleague, Representative Lucero, who said that this was about money. I disagree with that because it's not about money. The majority leader said so. It's about the power. The majority leader said, we could legislatively figure out a way to get that $30 million for SNAP. Well, then why haven't we? What are we waiting for? You have to judge actions, not the words. Remember early in session, we stood, those of us that were here on the House floor, the rest of us remotely, we were talking about revising Chapter 12 in statute. And we were told, don't worry, we have a committee for that. The Committee on the Legislative Process Reform, they're gonna take a deep dive in Chapter 12, and we'll come up with the revisions that are necessary. What happened? Nothing. That committee did absolutely nothing. I think they might have passed one bill out of there, but it didn't come here. I don't know where it went. That was smoke and mirrors. It's clear from the actions that the majority party had no intention of revising Chapter 12. They were pacifying us by saying, we'll take care of it in committee. Just like we're being told now, we can't have, end the emergency powers because we don't have an off-ramp. You can't say that when you control the off-ramp. We don't have an off-ramp because the majority doesn't want that off-ramp. They would rather say, this is why we need the emergency powers. How long do you think I'd get away with it at home if my wife said, honey, I want you to stain the deck? And I said, I can't because I don't have any stain? That's not gonna fly. And it doesn't fly in here. The people that are watching, they know. We don't have to argue about who said what. Look at the actions. If the majority wanted an off-ramp, we'd have one. The truth is that they don't. They want it this way. So let's take back our legislative authority. Because if not now, when? Thank you.
The member from Isanti, the maker of the motion, Minority Leader Doubt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And members, appreciate the thorough debate. Although considering we've spent 15 months now under emergency powers, you know, the few hours that this legislature actually spends talking about and debating those emergency powers is frankly pathetic. When I got elected, I came here to do my job. I came here to make a difference. I came here to help Minnesotans. And I'm certain that in your mind, that's what you imagined you came here for. But for the last 15 months, we have not been able to do that. I've taken call after call from my constituents. And very often, I find myself saying, we have no control over that. Well, can't you have a public hearing? I have to say, literally, the Democrats won't have hearings on this stuff. They won't take input. They don't care. And I'm sorry if you disagree with me, but your actions have led me to that conclusion. I have listened to a lot of comments here, which are really inaccurate. I'm glad that some of my colleagues stood up to correct the record. Representative Winkler was again, standing on this floor, saying that people on this side of the aisle have diminished or not taken seriously COVID, or called it not a serious situation, or whatever words he used. Why don't you spend your time talking about what you believe? Because I attended the funeral of my neighbor about two weeks ago, who was 54 years old, who died of COVID. If you don't think that I know this is a serious thing, it's absolutely unacceptable and outrageous for you to say those sorts of things. And when you do that, it leads me to the conclusion that you intend to politicize this so that your governor can keep his emergency powers. That's the only conclusion you've led me to. Because the one thing that I know for certain that has happened since the beginning of is that we've moved the goalposts. Remember back to the beginning? It was 15 days to stop the spread. We gotta slow this thing down. 15 days. 15 days was 443 days ago. And when it no longer was about stopping the spread, when that didn't justify keeping the emergency powers, we started talking about other stuff. We have to prevent our hospitals from being overrun. Remember that? That's why we did all of this. Well, I think we all found out that our hospitals were never overrun. And today, we're at our lowest-ever level of COVID hospitalization since we've tracked that. The lowest ever, and they're headed even lower. But when our hospitals didn't get overrun, we had to come up with other reasons. Wouldn't we stop talking about that? Do you remember the modeling? Remember the governor's modeling at the beginning justified all of this? 78,000 Minnesotans were gonna perish because of COVID. Thankfully, he was dead wrong. And it was less than 10% of that. And I remember when some of those people tried to throw students at the University of Minnesota under the bus. Do you want to know what? Those students at the University of Minnesota that created that model did a flawless job. Because they took the inputs that the public health professionals here at the state of Minnesota gave them. That model spit out exactly what they put into it. Garbage. And the garbage didn't come from those students. It came from this administration. How dare he blame students at the University of Minnesota? Pathetic. Remember the R-NOT? That's how you determine how quickly it spreads? We talked about all this stuff at the beginning, over and over. Every day, it was in the press. The R-NOT was 2.1 or 2.3 or whatever it was. And what that meant is that every person who was a confirmed positive was likely to spread this virus to 2.3 other people. And that would determine how quickly it would spread or not spread. And that's why it was so important to get to natural immunity. Remember natural immunity? When's the last time you heard about that? Flexibility for contracts. The governor needed flexibility for contracts so that we could move quickly. What did we see? We saw exactly what happens when we give this governor unchecked power and flexibility for contracts. And he dished out and wasted money and paid no-bid contracts to his political allies, paid out to Democrat groups and Democrat operatives. He bought a morgue. And he wasted tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in this way. And you know what? Our Constitution says, you appropriate the money. But you're okay letting him do that. Money wasted on groups that specialize in abortion doula services, whatever that means. And messaging for the governor's office. Messaging. You know how many people at work in the governor's office get paid every day out of the money we have already appropriated to message for him? He didn't need to waste any more of this money on that. But that's what tells me this governor was all too happy to politicize the pandemic. Vaccines and testing. We need to have flexibility so we can get vaccines and testing. We have the lowest positivity rate since we've tracked that, 1.2%. And vaccines, they're available. Appointments right now. Go on your computer. You can walk in almost anywhere and get a vaccine if you want one. So that doesn't need to be an excuse to keep the emergency powers anymore. But we can't let them go, so we've gotta come up with some others. And what were some of those that we've heard? SNAP and federal benefits. We've gotta keep this money coming in from the federal government. We've given you a parachute and out on that. Well, sure, we're open to that. You had a committee specifically designed and created to deal with this issue. And what did that committee do this session? And I wanted to believe you. I wanted to believe that we were gonna roll up our sleeves and do good work. And I know that the chair of that committee, Representative Palowski, tried. But his hands were tied. You were never gonna allow him to do it. And everything that I thought that that committee was about and why it was created came to fruition. Because that committee didn't put out a single product. Not a single bill made it to the House floor. You didn't do one thing that you said that committee was gonna do. But you know what you did? You wasted all of our time. And the excuses never stop. We need to have the emergency powers for a mask mandate to keep people safe. The science tells us that masks keep people safe. Until the science stopped telling us that masks keep people safe. Because we had the identical spike in Wisconsin, who was wide open with no masks, that we had here in Minnesota. Restaurants open. No masks. We were completely closed. Every restaurant closed. Everybody required to wear a mask in public, six-foot social distancing. And we had exactly the same spike. It went up to the same level and came down at the same time. And when science wouldn't defend what you were doing, we stopped talking about it. The CDC came out and said, people no longer need to wear a mask if you've been vaccinated. All of a sudden, the governor determined, oh, nobody needs to wear a mask. You know why? Because when the public heard those words, they were going to turn against the governor. Which, again, for the 15th time in this speech, is all of the evidence you need to tell you that this governor wasn't making decisions based on science. He was making decisions based on politics. And last week, on Thursday... And last week, on Thursday, I was shocked to find out that maybe there's not enough communications people paid for the dollars we appropriate here in the governor's administration. Because at 4:58 PM on Thursday, the Minnesota Department of Corrections tweeted out this tweet. "Today, MMB Communicates announced that Minnesota's monthly revenue income is much higher than anticipated. Thanks to Governor Tim Walz, our economy is coming back stronger than ever. Now it's time for the Minnesota Legislature to finish their work and get a budget agreement that supports all Minnesotans." That's the typical messaging I'd expect out of this administration, right? It's all we've heard for 15 months. But why did I say that they must not have enough communications people at the Department of Corrections? Because just 90 minutes before that, Alliance for a Better Minnesota tweeted this. "Today, MMB Communicates announced that our state's monthly revenue income is much higher than anticipated. Thanks to Governor Tim Walz, our economy is coming back stronger than ever. Now it's time for the Minnesota Legislature to finish their work and get a budget agreement that supports all Minnesotans." Why are we paying people with tax dollars in this administration to write communications for us if we're going to take our communications from Alliance for a Better Minnesota? Tell me this hasn't been political. And today, you have an opportunity to do what Minnesotans expect. The latest polling I've seen says that 65% of Minnesotans think that the governor's emergency powers should end. That same polling would also say that 35% of Minnesotans will blindly follow this governor off of a cliff if he leads them there. You are part of that 35%. And this is your opportunity to prove me wrong. For the 21st time, we are about to take a vote where we could end this governor's emergency powers. At one time, six of you that showed just a little bit of courage were voting to end those. But just days later, when your vote would have made a difference, that courage was gone. But today, I assure you that 65% of people in Minnesota or more want you to do what they know is right. No more excuses. You've run out of them. Now it's time to end the governor's emergency powers. Please vote with me green today. Let's put this chapter to bed. Let's roll up our sleeves and finish this state's budget. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The clerk will take the roll on the doubt motion to suspend the rules. Will the chief clerk please call the names of the members who have not voted yet?
Bar.
Bar, aye.
Bar, aye. Bliss.
Bliss, aye.
Bliss, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no. Davids. Davids.
Davids, full tie.
Davids, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen.
Franzen, yes.
Franzen, aye. Frederick.
Frederick, no.
Frederick, no. Hamilton. Hamilton. Houseman.
Hamilton votes aye.
Hamilton, aye. Houseman.
Houseman, no.
Houseman, no. Lee.
Lee, no.
Lee, no. Mariani. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Markwart.
Markwart, no.
Markwart, no. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. Mortenson.
Mortenson, aye.
Mortenson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, no.
Murphy, no. Nelson N. Nelson N. Nelson N, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Pryor.
Pryor, no.
Pryor, no. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, no.
Schultz, no.
The clerk will close the roll. There being 64 ayes and 68 nays, the motion does not prevail. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. This is to notify you that the Senate is now duly organized for the 2021 special session pursuant to the Minnesota Constitution and Minnesota statutes. The message is signed Talar Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
Announcements. Representative Doubt, announcements. Representative Winkler, announcements.
Madam Speaker, DFL members, we will caucus 15 minutes after session. It will give members time to find a Zoom location who are on the floor. So 15 minutes after session for caucus.
Representative Doubt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I did forget. Republican members will caucus downstairs in our caucus room 15 seconds after session.
Is there any announcement about the time of ways and means convening? Anyone have an announcement on that topic? Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, I would love to make an announcement about the time of ways and means convening, and will be one hour after session. Adjourns.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, I move that when the House adjourns today, it adjourns until 10:00 AM Tuesday, June 15, 2021.
Representative Winkler moves that when the House adjourns, it adjourns until 10:00 AM Tuesday, June 15, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
Representative Winkler moves that the House do now adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The House stands adjourned until 10:00 AM Tuesday, June 15, 2021.